Welcome to Queen Anne's County Board of Education Work Sessions for June the 9th, 2021. Do I have a motion going to close session?
Yes, sir. Pursuant to general provisions, Article 3-305 and 3-104, I move for the board to meet in a closed session to consider matters that relate to negotiations and to or perform an administrative function.
Second.
First and second, any comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. We'll be back at 5 o'clock. Thank you. Welcome to the Queen Anne's County Board of Education, June 9th, Public Work Sessions for Budget. Can we stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. I'd like to welcome Dr. Salins to Queen Anne's County and our school board. She's been to work roughly for a week now doing various things. I know very busy as our acting superintendent. And officially, July the 1st, will start her four-year term as superintendent of Queen Anne's County. So, welcome in, everybody.
Thank you very much.
And we also have Mrs. Pauls back with us. Janet? Okay. Everybody had a chance to look at their minutes for both opened and closed for June the 2nd?
Yep.
Do I have a motion?
It's removed.
Second.
Have a motion second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay. Agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented, sir.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you. Okay. Patty, would you like to start off on our?
Sure. If Mrs. Towers would like to come up, she's going to be presenting to you where we are with our budget, giving you an update on the budget. Good evening, President Smith, Dr. Salins, board members. Tonight we bring before you our budget draft book along with our budget summary that was emailed earlier this week. We can go line by line if you like. The first thing I want to bring item to your attention would be revenue. The top part of the revenue, you can see that the state revenue for this upcoming year for fiscal year '22 is basically going to remain flat. The only additions that we're seeing to revenue for fiscal year '22 would be an increase in MOE per House Bill 1372 of roughly 1.5 million. And then with going into fund balance of additional $130,000. And then other items, other revenues, we're going to see an increase of 250 for our non-public placement reimbursement. So, we're looking at going into FY '22, increased revenue of 1.9 million.
1.9, but 250, I'm sorry, 330 is coming out of fund balance. So, revenue from state and county is less 330.
Yes, correct. So, if we go down line by line, we'll go through on your summary page here is reductions or cost savings that we went ahead and took a look at. So, in this budget proposal before you tonight is the elimination of support coordinator of 90,000. There's salary savings, lapse, retirements, positions, no riffs, but this is just basically through retirements of 545,000. And then there's reductions that we took a look at of power school performance, moving that to ESER at 75,000. Agile Minds move into ESER at 95,000. Moving Math 180 into ESER at 35,000. Teachers for summer school, 20,000. Tutoring, tutoring, we're slated to receive little over 780,000, I believe, in tutoring funds over the next couple of years. So, we're going to see a savings in operating of 156,000. Miscellaneous instruction at 8,000. And then, under the special ed, the next couple is basically allocating these special ed teachers that went to Kerwin, but it did not get removed from the operating budget. So, we have to take into account to reflect to actual. So, we're looking at assistance reducing to 32,000. Teachers reflecting to actual, reducing to 83. And then, other compensation to actual, reducing by 10. The summer school, again, at ESER 2, so we can deduct the 20,000. There's healthcare savings that was in excess of last year at 110, so we're going to recognize that savings this year. And then, another possible reduction allocation would be your secretary hourly at 27. So, that's just basically the reductions for adjustments to actuals.
On number four and five, when we're going to use ESER funds for testing, a couple of things, would that be sustainable for at least a couple of years? That money will be, I mean, I know because it's one-time money that we're using, but it's earmarked for that, but after that goes away, it's something we'll have to keep an eye on to recoup.
That's a good point because is it sustainable long-term? No. Is it sustainable for next couple of years? Yes, under ESER 2 and ESER 3. But then after that, we're going to have to come up with a plan to absorb it back into the operating.
So, those should be good for at least a couple of years, two to three years, but it's something I think we should add when we go through our budget here and should keep a close eye on that, anything that's going to...
The next item is cost of doing business. So, you're going to have increases to the budget. The increase would be instruction, the psychological services that we talked about that are non-special ed students at 110,000. You have the special ed consortium contract at 132,000. Non-public placement, need to increase it by 433,000. The furlough day, we have to add back in at 270,000. The wage adjustment for minimum wage, an additional 32,000 in the budget. The transportation, cost of doing business with that is at 133,000. Shredding into all buildings at 6,000. Your travel tracker for athletic field trips for students, 8,000. Your technology annual support increases at 12,000. Licenses for Adobe and Creative Cloud for CTE, 15,000. And then, your additions too, there's a placeholder for salaries, a little over 2 million. Full-time assistant at CES, gateway teacher at Sellersville Middle at 85,000. And then, your drug and alcohol prevention instructor, 85,000. So, on this summary page, you see the cost of the item on the right-hand side and on the very far right is cumulative either costs or savings. So, you can see the budget go up and down accordingly. And I think it should be noted too that the additions here, there are quite a number of more additions. Obviously, these aren't just the needs of the district. Certainly, principals and supervisors and directors, our executive team members have identified other things, but we just can't find them at this point. So, these were prioritized and so they show up here. But there are, you know, there are probably two or three additional pages of things that, because there's always needs out there and more asked for, more staffing and such. So, just to let you know that it's, those aren't the only needs in the district. Those are just needs that were identified as the highest priority, critical needs. And you can see then balance the budget that way. And then, attached is a budget book. I didn't know if you want to go through the budget book or what else we can review tonight? You had any questions?
I did have questions on page six of the large attachment that we had. And I was also then, I was kind of comparing it to the one that we received, the approved budget fiscal year 2021. But in the one before, there was an accountant in before. So, we have the central office administrative personnel slated at the 9.25 FTEs, but there's only 8.25 listed.
Right, because the accountant, I think, was put in as a request, but that does have to be updated.
Correct. Okay, so it is just 8.25?
Yes.
Okay, great.
And there's something about the budget too. The salary for the assistant superintendent or deputy superintendent, however we're going to clarify them, is put over different places in the budget. I had asked that several years ago, so, because it's not listed under central office, it's actually broken up over special ed.
Your mid-level.
Mid-level, yes.
And then, operations and facilities.
So, that's why it's not listed on here. Just brought up that point.
There's definitely a need for an accountant in the business office.
Yeah, we are very lean. I'm going to do a personal, you know, shout-out here, especially with all these funds coming down. The staff works very hard and very dedicated staff. It's a pleasure to work with them.
Right on. Okay. Can I also ask on page 12 of 56, during the central office instructional directional staff, so, we're giving it, we're doing a 3% increase, is that correct? Is that coming to, is it just because increase in the salaries?
We needed to adjust the actual numbers. So, that's why there was an increase.
Okay.
In preparing for the budget, we also take a look at, we actually do the actuals, but then what was budgeted last year and if there's any adjustments for that.
Okay. And then, before, we'd had the workforce coordinator, which is not in there now. So, do we not have a workforce coordinator? It was in our, this book here that we were given before, on page 14, we had a workforce coordinator.
Go ahead.
I can answer that.
Sure. Come on up.
We're going together with the other shore counties. And we hired that person with mutual agreement. And we do have, I believe, 17 seats, the whole republic, but it'll be 17 that can be in there, but we're working with the other shore counties.
This is the one that was, the commissioners are doing the county budget?
Yes, absolutely.
Right on. Right on. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
At some time, we're going to have to absorb that back into the budget. They're going to...
Maybe not.
Maybe not?
We can work on it, yes.
It is, we have a million-dollar grant from MSD for the nine eastern shore ESMEC group. And we have stretched that over and yes, we will have a part of it, but not, it won't be as significant as a whole position. And for, right now, we're getting, it costs about $5,000 per student. But of course, we get paid by the state for, you know, a certain amount per student. So, that ends up being that we really are allocating that money to something, but there's still additional funds there, so.
Is it okay that I'm asking? I'm sorry.
No, yes, please. Thank you.
So, on page 18 of 55, on the consultants, so there was an increase of 110,000 on the consultants. What was that regarding?
On the summary page here, if we take a look here, let's see, under cost of doing business, that's going to be for that psychological services, psychologist services?
I think we have trouble filling that. We have trouble filling that in-house. And I think we had like three or four, if I'm not mistaken, that we've had to contract out, which has a little, I mean, some of that goes away from the part of it, but we have additional costs because it's contracted.
Yes. It is very difficult to hire those. And they're very high demand and many districts have gone to contractual services.
That was all my questions.
And they were good questions.
Thank you. I appreciate you.
I had a question. Page 16, secretary and clerical for the school's athletic department. Is that going to be split between the two high schools or which school is that secretary?
It's split between both high schools.
Okay. Are we going to do the same thing with athletic director, split between two high schools?
No, at this time, we're not pursuing that. It's quite a task and a set of responsibilities for that position and I don't know that one person could actually do both of the schools. That would have to be their full-time job and right now, we have assistant principals filling that responsibility.
Which, for them, is like having two full-time jobs.
Yeah, it's very difficult.
So, I didn't know if there was any possibility of actually having full-time athletic directors?
Well, of course, with the budget right now, right, with the budget right now, we've had a lot of discussions about this this week. I'm looking at Mrs. Pauls because we've had a lot of discussion about that. So, if we can wiggle our way out of this budget and can find the funds to do that, but I don't know that I can promise that that would happen this year. Certainly, it's on the table. And again, that would be one of those things where you see additions down here where, you know, and we can do this in the future, or sometimes we list additions that make the next top 10 priorities, that if we do have money, that, you know, these would be the next 10 things we would fund or whatever. So, we can certainly look at putting that on here and that certainly would be a high priority because it is challenging. They work very hard to make that happen.
And it's falling on the shoulders of employees who have young families. So, it's very hard on them.
Very hard.
And just because we're talking about the athletic director, talking about sports and things, as I had mentioned with Ms. Paul and said that if we're going to be doing this clay target shoot and we're going to need to pay our coaches, otherwise, they're going to need to get their own insurance. Not that it's a huge amount, but do we think that we can find the monies needed to pay coaches for the clay target?
Yeah, certainly the coaches, that's more reasonable amount of money than a full-time salary.
A couple thousand.
Three to five, usually.
1,500 to 3,000, I believe, per coach.
Yeah, I think we can certainly find the funding. If we, if that goes through and we can make that happen, then absolutely, I think we can support that.
Great.
I have a question on page 13. Have we ascertained about data-wise? Who uses it?
So, we actually, yes, actually, I'm going to let you go ahead because you did poll and talk to, you know, via email every principal and their needs. So, she gave us a report today. Most of the principals responded to the email and there's one that still currently uses data-wise, that they find it beneficial in the school system. The other schools felt like non-monetary support would be sufficient going forward. So, we're looking at maybe other options for that one school then. And it could be a potential item that we could decrease from the budget.
How are we paying for the data-wise now? Is it through the operating budget?
Yes.
Okay.
Contracted service.
Okay, it's a contracted service and I didn't see where it was listed. How much is that by chance?
11,000, I believe.
No, that's just the consultant, not the actual program.
Actually, I believe that's the full cost for...
Oh, that's for the full cost?
Yes. Yeah, I don't believe there's any other additional fees, but point well taken that that we might not have to even look at that $11,000 this year. That could be absorbed back into the operating budget for other things, just like we talked about for potentially maybe for those contracts for coaches.
You're telling me only one school out of all of them uses? Is there, I mean, is it odds, I mean, is that a Title I school? Is it a different scenario? Is it a...
It is a Title I school. I think the other schools have, what they've learned over the course of the several years, that they're implementing on their own.
This school just hasn't.
Correct.
But it should be able to. I mean, if 90%, 9 out of 10 are doing it, then you would think the 10, it's not like it's, you know, 50/50 or 60/40.
I think basically, the way the question was asked is, are you seeking additional supports, you know? And they said, sure, we would like to still have some support for that. The others are saying, we don't really need the support because we feel very confident we can do it ourselves. So, I mean, I definitely agree with you, you know, looking at why do they need that extra support and how can we make that happen here without necessarily having to contract services?
I mean, I could, you know, if it's spread over 13 schools is one thing. If one school is using it, then it gets to be, I mean, it's $11,000 item, but, you know, we're 460, you know, I find it upside down. So, everything like that gets us back closer to where we're supposed to be.
And we have needs. There are needs.
Oh, yeah. And that's not even counting some of the things we'd like to have, but...
Towers, do you know offhand, the health services, I guess, needed, they asked for CPR mannequins. Do you know if that was put in the budget or...
That doesn't come to my attention. I can certainly look into that.
Just because I would question why we needed it when you can do CPR online. I'm like, I don't know how you can do CPR online, but you can.
Well, that's something we also could talk to emergency services and maybe do a joint program with them, I would think, maybe.
There's two or three services in this county that does CPR recertifications or certifications, and they usually bring their mannequins with them. So, unless you have an instructor within the school system, having the mannequins wouldn't do you much good unless you have somebody certified to teach or recertify.
The thing that comes to my mind is that it might qualify for some grants under CTE because they're very specific on typical items. So, but it's not in the operating budget.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So, that was not for the nurses' office?
It was, just let me find it because I had, it was in our book that we had. Let me find that page. I'm sorry.
Couldn't that be from a grant through the fire school too? I mean, couldn't we be getting...
Well, it depends on what it is. If it's for CPR certification for your nursing staff, that's different. If it's for your certified nursing assistant program, then that's, those are different mannequins.
Oh, yeah.
Those teaching him how to do bed baths and they wouldn't be doing lines, but they're skills. It's a totally different, because a CPR is just a little head. There's not much to them.
It was a school department health and they said it was a need. And I also questioned the AED replacements just because I thought you could just, can you not recharge AEDs if they've not...
They have an expiration and so there's patches in there.
Okay, and but then, yes, it's CPR mannequins, $10,000. So, and it's under health. Age, I don't know what page, somewhere in the middle. But it was under a need, so I wasn't sure if it had gotten put in.
I think the recommendation from the team who reviewed it was, let's see if we can find grants to support that.
Okay.
Or kinds of funds, maybe even...
On page 27, are we on the non-public placements? I mean, I know that we had, it was that large of a budget this year. Are we anticipating that it will be that large again next year?
Yes.
Okay.
If not, an additional one, but we're not sure.
Person. Okay.
And we've seen that increase over the last years in one or two.
Again, that was one that we always underfunded for years and then we tried to make it happen through attrition. That and substitutes.
It looks like it's required more than ever.
Ever.
I think too, you're seeing the level of disability in some of our students are significant compared to what they used to be.
When we talk about these ESNER funds, that's going to be monitored very closely and, you know, you're beating into our heads that it's got to be done properly because if not, we can, and that your department has to monitor that. So, I'm sure, certainly it's more burden put on you. Can any of those ESER funds have a grant person that actually monitor those things or that doesn't count?
We would love it and definitely would need it in the finance area too as well. The blueprint coordinator that we're talking about, and it is a requirement to have... Implementation coordinator. Yeah, it's called an implementation coordinator and it has to be designated by June 30th.
Is June the 30th?
This June 30th has to be designated for the following year.
But that would be, that could be funded by ESER.
It could be funded by ESER.
Because I was just thinking, you know, we do one thing wrong, we're talking, you know, we're talking about this, one grant's over 3 million and another one's coming at 6. I mean, that's 10%, that's getting up there.
It's definitely, the requirements are very heavy on the monitoring and auditing of the funding that's coming through the ESER grants. And that person would, sometimes you might think of them as somebody in Ms. Towers', you know, domain, but it's really going to be more of a programmatic person because they really have to be able to follow the programs to whether we're doing the programs with fidelity. And so, that's the implementation piece. And so, it's really important for us to understand that those ESER funds have to go for implementation of programs. They're not really for like teacher enhancement salaries or capital projects. They really have to go for, to close and reduce the gap that was created, the learning loss that was created, to reduce that. Those are the funds for. Now, don't get me wrong, you can hire staff with them, obviously. So, if we were to increase our interventions at the middle school level, you know, we could hire an intervention teacher. That would be the math, you know, Math 180 intervention teacher. So, we can certainly use it for staff, but we have to also know that those are grant funds. And so, that, you know, position would be, needed to be publicized as this is a two-year grant position so that the person would know that, you know, we may not be able to absorb that in the operational budget after the ESER funds are, you know, done.
And the service won't be available to the students there to that point. I mean, once there's a service there, people get used to it.
Right.
Then all of a sudden...
Yeah. Well, and the purpose is really just kind of like what we do with special ed is, you know, we give them the skills necessary to adapt to so that they, you know, we don't want to keep a student in special ed forever. We're trying to give them, you know, the skills that they need to be able, right, lifetime skills. So, this would be something where it would be a two-year span to try to give students what they need to kind of catch up and to reduce that learning loss that happened over the last 16 months.
This implementation coordinator could be paid for with ESER funds?
Yes.
So, again, that would be a grant-funded, two-year, however long it takes.
Right. Or we could choose to kind of shift responsibilities of someone that we already currently have. So, we could have a supervisor that, you know, has X amount of responsibilities and we say, okay, you keep this subject area, but we're going to take this and disperse it out and I need you to take on the responsibility of this implementation coordinator. So, it could be somebody who, you know, and then we would pay part of their salary with the ESER funds. We could do it that way. Or we could hire somebody exclusively that's not currently on the staff, that would be just for the implementation and with the caveat that it would be a two-year position. And I would like to add too, we're very fortunate to have a grant specialist, Jen Bode. She's been with us for many, many years and the knowledge that she has, she eagle eyes the grants line by line and we definitely meet and discuss each type of purchase and ones that are on her radar, we discuss. So, we're very fortunate to have her.
So, you feel comfortable between the lines?
And that certainly will let the board know which direction that we choose to go for that June 30th deadline.
I mean, this is definitely going to be a two, it's a June the 30th this year, but it's going to be for at least two years.
We have to designate it for two years.
When is the...
ESER 3 though, when does that go, that goes until when?
2024. 24. The application isn't out yet. It's going to be out within the next week or two is what MSD is relating to us.
And that's the one we're earmarked for roughly 6 million?
6.7, correct.
That'll be a three-year, or three more, three years after we, like you said, we haven't received it yet. Just out of curiosity, because you mentioned other things, ESER 2 money, have we gotten all that money or do we spend it and then get reimbursed for it?
The only thing that's come out of there so far, and I'll have to double check, but to my knowledge, it's just going to be for the summer school expenses.
So, we get that, once we spend it, then we apply.
Yes, we ask for...
I mean, we got it sitting in the bank somewhere, but we don't get it until we apply.
What's the net on there? What is the turnaround, you know, 30-day, 45-day after you apply, after you've done the paperwork, 60 days?
Yeah, it does depend honestly on who is, what shop it comes out of at MSD because some of, you know, our Title I funds can be reimbursed at a much faster rate, almost monthly. And then, you have others that we have to wait three and four or five months to get reimbursed. It depends on, if it's new, sometimes it takes them time to set up the accounts and everything. So, it really, I mean... It's on a reimbursement basis. So, we have to, we, as a school system, up-fronts the cost and then ask for reimbursement and have to wait for it. But reimbursement comes at various levels depending on who it is at MSD. So, some are really good about it, some departments are great about it and some aren't, you know, as efficient about it. But sometimes as I, you know, we, sometimes we have to float quite a bit of money in order to wait for that reimbursement.
And that's what Ms., does she take care of that as well? Does she ensure that we're getting our reimbursements? Is that part of her grant stuff?
It's part of our reconciliation with the grant process. Correct.
Thanks.
So, may I ask about Schoology? We have, we're under a two-year contract with that?
I believe it was to the board last month and it was approved for one year.
Okay, so one more year. So, we will still be utilizing that for this coming school year?
For this coming school year. And laws are too fun. Really take a hard look at it and, you know...
That's what I was going to ask.
Get some feedback from the staff who's using it to see, you know, and we can also Get some feedback from the staff who's using it to see, you know, and we can also pull utilization reports and see, you know, this year on a regular basis to see how is it being used. And then obviously, kind of survey the staff. Are you using it? What is the benefit? You know, is this really product really working for you, or do we need to look at other options? But we're definitely this year going to follow through with that. Ms. Pauls, did you want to add anything else with that? Okay. Just wanted to make sure we're on the same page. Okay.
I had a question about that as well, because I didn't see it listed here, but is that, on page 19 of the big budget, is that part of the Power School? Because I didn't see it specifically listed out in the license agreement.
It is part of Power School.
Okay. Well, I can tell you from a parent perspective with SchoolAge, it's a little confusing. I know my son has gotten used to it, but to actually see the assignments he has to do, I have to switch over to parent portal, and he has to do the same thing on his portal. So he can see what's been graded, what hasn't, and then jump back into SchoolAge. He can see the assignments in SchoolAge, but he can't tell if they've been graded.
Okay.
So it's a little confusing when I ask him what's due and I'm checking on him. I now have to jump into another system to see if he did it or if it was graded.
Right.
So from a parent perspective, it's a little, it's a little confusing to keep jumping back and forth.
Gotcha.
But I don't know from a teacher perspective if they're dealing with the same difficulties.
And unfortunately, I don't know that yet. So we'll have to get a little, you know, get some more usage out of it to see and get some feedback from the staff if they see the same, same concerns. I'm not sure.
Some of the same, because they don't talk to each other as, as much as we would like it. So we need more training on how, because Julie did come last year and talk a little bit about how to navigate the two systems so that they would, it would be more easy in using it, so.
And that there is a difference that I've seen between the two semesters of how teachers load assignments. Not everybody does it the same way. So there's an adjustment for the student, figure out where to find or how to find the assignment if the teachers aren't using it all the same way.
We talked about that today.
Okay.
About how, what additional PD would be needed for teachers.
Because on the parent's side, my 15-year-old is my tutor.
Yeah.
He's, he's the one helping to navigate through to figure it out, so.
Yeah, that I was going to say, they're usually much better than we are with it.
He's like, oh, no, no, mom, that teacher's using it this way. This teacher doesn't do it this way.
You know, the PD calendar today and talked about, you know, where our priorities are going to lie with that. So obviously, we need to do more training with the platform itself to try to make it easier for parents and students to navigate.
And will that professional development be able to be paid for by ESSER since it's helping with...
Yes, it's already, yep.
Student learning.
It is, absolutely.
Okay.
So that can be done in some of our in-service days or something?
Yes, yes, we talked, we have five in-service days prior to school, and then just a couple more during school. And we were actually just starting to plan out what those days were going to look like.
Okay.
Do I have any other questions, Jane, right now?
Are we at a point, sir, that we can vote on this budget? Are we confident enough with all the answers?
We, we can. I mean, I think it's a durable budget. I don't think anybody is completely happy with everything. I think we've got to keep in mind, we're probably 460,000 using of non, you know, one-time funds for reoccurring costs.
460? I can only see 330.
Well, you got two on number four and five, ESNER funds that we're using for testing, which is qualified for ESNER, but, you know, we would have to absorb that at some point in another year or two. I think, I think it's prudent to do that now, but I think it's something we've got to keep in mind, that you look strictly at this budget, with all the commitments we're making to everything, you know, there's some money that's at a year or two years down the road, we're going to have to close that gap. And I think it's, you know, we, we've had this issue in the past, we'll probably have this issue in the future. But I just, you know, and I think our board understands this. Jane's done a good job explaining it to everybody, but it is, you know, it's not like if this budget just stayed like it is, next year we're going to have an issue, and following year we're going to have an issue because we're using one-time money.
Well, we've always had that issue, sir. But I'm very excited, the fact that we're not going into a RIF.
I, I...
I have to say, thank you very much to Ms. Towers and her staff, because I am grateful that we're not having to do a RIF.
Oh, yeah, I, you know, we're getting our furlough data back. I mean, we're, we're buying our furlough data back that we had to furlough teachers last year. We're not going to have to do that this year, it looks like, with this budget.
No increase in health costs to our staff.
Yeah, our insurance looks good, coming in good this year.
And still being able to cover the increase in the minimum wage and be able to hopefully give everyone an increase in their compensation.
Our obligations, you know, what we've done, and, you know, so I think it's a, I think it's a good compromise, everything. It's just, you know, then we discussed this. I have no problem bringing it in front of the board unless, we do meet next Wednesday. We could have it all, I mean, is there any, any little tweaks you're going to feel comfortable or uncomfortable with for next week? As you said, any certain numbers might come in at the la...
We are still waiting for the final numbers from the state. We, we're still have the draft numbers for state aid. Hopefully, we'll get that this week. And I just need direction. Are we going to leave DataWise or just go ahead and remove that, reduce that allocation?
I see, I mean, this budget's in there. We can always take it out as we go through the year. You said one school out of...
One, one school currently that I know of is utilizing it.
I would refer that to Dr. Sullins.
Yeah, I was going to say.
Or Janet, or whoever's going to have to make that decision.
Ms. Pauls, I mean, I would recommend we take it out, because I really think that we can support this, the one school who needs the support. Okay, so that would be my recommendation, is to remove that.
But then we, instead of using 330, we don't have to use 319.
Yeah.